All right, it is six P M. This is the Wednesday, December tenth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting of the Village of Milbrook Board of Trustees. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Kirkwood.
Mayor Doro.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Justice Buckland.
Here.
Trustee Mossen.
Here.
Justice Sochi.
Here.
Uh, just a couple of quick items. Uh, Trustee Sochi, I believe this is your last meeting with us.
It's December.
Thank you for serving, for being to serve. We really appreciate it. Appreciate all your contributions and um
Thank you.
Yeah. You feel the stuff through your day.
Just wanna thank you for for the last uh last year.
Thank you.
Phil, thank you so much. You'll be missed. Um, one other agenda item that's, one other item that's not on the agenda. A bit of requests come in today from uh Milbrook Continental there over on Alden. Um, I guess this has happened a couple times. I've never really dealt with it, but they have a temporary liquor liquor license right now. They're applying for a permanent liquor license and they requested that the village Uh, there's certain um procedures they have to go through to to get this permanent liquor license. And uh they requested that the village waive the thirty day advance notice waiting period Uh, to permit them to file their application with the New York State Liquor Authority without delay. Um, from my perspective, we reviewed this request and find that granting such waiver is appropriate and will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare of the village. Hopefully pass this resolution. Uh, we hereby waive thirty day advance notice waiting period required under section one ten B of the Alcohol Beverage Control Law. And we let Milbrook Continental submit their application to the N Y S L A immediately. Uh, so I s- I propose that we grant this. We've done it. The last one we did was House of Steppes. I don't have an issue with this. Not anything to add. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we um waive this advance notice period and grant their request. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. Kirkwood.
Mayor Doro.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Justice Buckland.
Aye.
Justice Mossen.
Aye.
And Justice Sochi.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sure they'll appreciate it. Um. Minutes. Minutes were sent out.
Yes.
For the last meeting. Any corrections, changes? I think I had one minor grammatical change. Any other changes from anybody else? Kind of motion to accept the minutes.
We got motion.
Second.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, the vouchers are going around. You know, just as a heads up on the vouchers, um, I realize they come in late and they come in late because, I don't know if Nicole said that around, but
Yes, she did.
She did, right? So they're coming in like day of oftentimes.
She did.
Yeah.
No, I understand.
Sometimes.
And um We try to get everything we can in one package for this meeting so we can pay the bills and not be late.
Yeah.
So um, we could take another approach where everyone has to uh review and sign each single uh voucher. This is, I think, an easier method. Uh, but if there's any issues in the future, just let me know. Uh, but that's why this is kind of a constant, you know, day of sort of thing. So apologies, but that's just the procedure we have. Can I have a motion to approve the vouchers?
We'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, not a lot of public participation tonight. Uh, there were some amendments to the Dutchess County budget. Just this last, I think this last week. There's gonna be some grant opportunities for um village halls, town halls, municipalities, police departments To do things like upkeep, paint the building, maybe look at the gym, et cetera. So we'll look for those mig grant opportunities in two thousand twenty-six. Departing D C, Dutchess County Legislature Houston, uh helped get that in the budget amendment. So we'll look for those in two thousand twenty-six. Probably gonna be a twenty-five thousand dollar grant per entity that we require a match from municipality. So We'll look for those in the new year. Hopefully we can apply and get uh get one of those grants. So that's my update from Dutchess County. I don't know if there's any fire updates here. Looks like it is.
He wasn't able to send the report. He was gonna actually get the report when he was here and then just calmly put it in.
Okay, so there's no report. Thank you. Um, all right, um, you know, quick thank you to the M F D for the parade of lights. I don't know if anybody saw it. One time had by all. Uh, safe. Um, thanks to uh Chief Torkin for for the safety and the traffic on that. Um, but yeah, that was a nice time. Uh, Chief, police.
Uh, so for the, excuse me, the month of November, our officers respond to a hundred and eighty calls for service. Nothing unusual. Pretty much routine calls for service. Twenty-six parking summons issued, fourteen uniform traffic tickets, zero arrests. If there's any opportunity to review that.
It's pretty quiet.
Uh, yeah, it was pretty quiet. A little bit more than usual, yeah. I mean, a hundred and eighty calls for service is pretty typical for us, but you know, a good portion of those are, you know, proactivity on the officer's part. Getting out there, doing traffic stops, responding to traffic complaints, uh foot patrol and things like that. I anticipate that the numbers will uh increase in in the next few months because we're gonna change the way we do some some of our reporting. Uh, right now, we do security checks on premises, but they're not technically um Reported in our records management system and I wanna change that because it's the good work that the officers do. They should be reflected in this department's business. So Looking to to kind of organize, put that together, and then you'll start seeing those numbers reflected as well.
Is it fair to say, Chief, that on every single shift, there's a call for service, like even if it's a foot patrol, let's say?
Yes, yeah.
It's sometimes multiple calls.
We try, yeah.
Or shift, obviously.
We shoot for two two foot patrols per shift. Um, and then you'll, you know, during those shifts, officers are also going to security checks that are They'll kind of categorize in one of two ways. Either something where a resident calls and says, hey, I'm gonna be on vacation and you check, you know, uh Kind of what we call dark house checks, which is when the officers go by routinely and check the house, make sure that have been any break-ins while they're away and they'll document that. And then there's also um, you know, checks of the schools for security, uh checks for some of, on some of the businesses when they're closed to make sure there've been no break-ins. Just things like that. Um, and that's what you're, that's where you're really gonna see the increase in numbers. Is a, we're trying to um standardize that so that where the houses of worship and the schools are all being routinely touched on a daily basis every shift. Um, and then that'll be recorded. That'll help once we get our new record management system, which we're expecting to roll out sometime in February, March. Okay, so if anyone has any questions, other questions, we can move on to training. Uh, during the month of November and December, Uh, so there's a slight change. This wasn't all sworn personnel. That was what we had anticipated. All but one officer was unable to make it to the training. So All but one officer completed the mandatory pistol and rifle qualifications. Uh, training was conducted by our instructors. Records have been properly documented in department files. These qualifications ensure that the officers remain compliant with state requirements and maintain a high level of readiness and To be able to respond to needs of the community. Um, for the second year, police, I'm sorry, any questions about about firearms training?
Does that one officer that didn't make it to training get trained?
He'll have to be, yeah, he'll have to be rescheduled. So We're doing a little bit later than usual, but that was because um in the past, there's been kind of a rifle program. Department didn't have department rifles. So how that we do, um, all officers had to be trained on the department on property. Um, and that that took some time to get those, to get those tools purchased and and built. And so that's why we're a little bit delayed getting qualifications done. Typically, I'd like to do them in May, even October. So tempers a little, temperatures a little bit better. So Uh, we squeezed it in before the end of December, all but one. So it's gonna be a cold day in the range, but we'll get through it. Okay, um, so the next is community outreach for the second year. Uh, we're participating with Toys for Tots program. Uh, as everyone knows, we're actively collecting new unwrapped toys and monetary donations to help ensure a holiday, uh joyful holiday season for children in the community. Uh, we're also working with uh Milbrook School District to try and identify children in the community that um are in need that we could help out through the toys specifically. Help them and their families through the Toys for Tots program. Uh, December eighteenth, we're joining them, Toys for Tots, at the Northern Dutchess Distribution site, Kipsey, to personally distribute toys to local families. And what we do is Um, we work with Toys for Tots and their staff and people who are registered with Toys for Tots for their families that are in need, they come up to the distribution center. And uh, you know, we we identify toys for each child in their, in the family and and selectively choose toys for their age group and gender. And they go home with a really nice, large bag of toys. And it's really, it's really a great thing. It's, that part of it is is the whole, is the best part of this whole program. And seeing, you know, how happy they are to get something for their kids that they otherwise wouldn't be able to provide. It's really, it's really an amazing day.
There's a lot of toys in there, Chief. Somebody gave me a big bag and I I dropped them off today, but there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of toys in there.
That's great. That's really important. Um, just like to remind everybody that we are, uh, you know, the main collection site for the village. The deadline is December twelfth. It's coming quickly.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, that quick. Uh, any kind of unwrapped toys or monetary contributions are greatly appreciated. If you dropped off at the village, checks can be made um to to the Made out to Toys for Tots, but they can put the envelope um to my attention and and leave with Sarah, Nicole, and and I can get it from them. And uh, that's, that's really all I have for the department's presentation. Also, any questions or anything? Very welcome.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, let's also um, let's just briefly discuss your proposed um policy change. And uh, we have a resolution here um that speaks to that. Um, so currently, correct me, stop me if I'm uh incorrect or just correct me. Uh, currently, there's an existing um civilian complaint procedure, um Community Review Board, which to my knowledge, I don't know if you've ever used it. I don't think we have. As I've been on the board, I don't think it's ever been utilized. So, and with using LexiPaul to adopt their policies, there's a complaint policy in there as well. Uh, it certainly makes sense to uh be global in this approach, to update our policies and um adopt this new policy. Uh, that's, that's my opinion. Chief, anything to add there or?
No, really, this is um, like you said, it's in line with the department policy. These policies are vetted by attorneys and professionals in the field of law enforcement. Um, you know, this is not something that's simply thrown together. It's twelve pages for just this one policy on how to handle personnel complaints. It's lengthy, it's robust, it covers everything we need to know legally and and how, and and procedure on how to apply that policy. Uh, my intention is if the board approves it, is to use this policy as our guideline moving forward. And then what we'll do is we will update the police department's website with um PDF forms for the public to have access to Uh, to file a personnel complaint and a commendation form. So it's, it's not just filing complaints against police officers, but also to commend good acts of service. So I think this is a, a better way to document it. Um, and it just keeps us in line with our current policy.
I like the commendation, you know, avenue as well to to, you know, add some positivity there. Um, you know, and then of course, people can always kind of come to us Either officially or kind of unofficially uh with issues um with the department. So there's always that avenue as well, which I I think is an important check. Any other questions? So I'd like to make a motion that we repeal and replace the existing civilian complaint procedure For civilians to report incidents of misconduct by an officer, employee, or official of the village. And we, you know, repeal the community review board. Um, so I'd like to make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, with the Trustee Mossen on the second. All right, Patrick. Kirkwood.
Mayor Doro.
Aye.
Justice Murphy.
Aye.
Justice Mossen.
Aye.
Justice Buckland. And Justice Sochi.
Aye.
Thank you all. I'm sure Chief appreciates it and uh
Thank you very much.
Great, great. Thanks for, thanks for bringing that to our attention. I think that's an important, uh, hard step forward here. Along, um, Highway Super Kelly.
How's everybody?
Good to see you.
It's lovely out.
It is lovely out.
We had extremely busy November. Um, halfway through the month, our leaf truck broke down. So the town of Washington, Joe Spagnola and Wendy Runtler helped us out hugely by letting us loan us a truck and a couple guys to come help us with leaves. Pick all the leaves up in a tidy fashion. Picking up the leaves at the back though takes a lot longer, a lot more time, a lot more effort. And as everybody probably saw, it blocked traffic a lot more. Just wanna thank the residents for dealing with that for a while. Another big thank you to Tim Race, who also allows us to dispose the leaves at his farm. Um, that saves a lot of money for the village. A lot of money. Um, we brought probably close to almost two thousand yards of leaves over there this year.
Just on the leaves, and I don't know if anybody else notices, um, you guys did a great job. I mean, just amazing. The patience and the um Just, just
Promptness.
Yeah.
Patience and promptness. Um, I will say, there, there's a small number of residents that, you know, wait until November thirtieth to put out all their leaves.
Yeah, I know.
Leave a huge pile. It's super dangerous.
Yeah.
Super inconsiderate.
Yes.
Um, and I think it's just, um, I I I don't think it's fair to their neighbors or or the D P W. So I think we should kind of Uh, think about maybe how to, how to fix that going forward because um Just a safety aspect too. I think it's, I mean, some of those piles that I saw at the end of the month were, were just huge. So if it's anybody's neighbors or you see it kind of in the future, you know, maybe people can have a conversation with people before we kind of take a more drastic approach. I prefer to just do it neighbor to neighbor. Um, so just keep it in the back of your head for for next, for next fall.
They're, they're, the residents aren't supposed to be blocking lanes and traffic. And that's a big thing that we're having to deal with is
Right.
Leaves out in the middle of the road and over the weekend, they're sitting there and
I think most people put out as they come down, you know? I mean, that's what I tried to, I don't put that much out, but when I do, it's, you know, every little bit at a time, right? Not, not all at once. It's just
Some of the businesses on Franklin are doing that.
A lot of them are companies still, you know, they're not even homeowners or the residents. They're just some Company. Um, but let's just think about that for next year. Sorry to interrupt. Thank you.
Closeout tennis courts and then uh in between picking up leaves, we got all the Christmas decorations up on Long Franklin Avenue and installed And staked up the ninety Christmas trees for the Business Association. Other than leaves and Christmas and snow, I don't have
And you gotta float too.
Yep, we're chucking that to the braid.
Very nice, very nice.
Thank you.
Very cool. And you're working hard out there with the snow already. So be safe out there. I don't need any more village vehicles getting, you know
So much, man.
In tournaments. Okay, um, just on highway, anything you wanna add with salt?
Yeah, um, I had just gotten an email from them and I will include that in the link that Sarah had kind of passed around saying we can add that to it, but I didn't have time to do that. I'm gonna ask her about it in a second. Anyway, Salt and how it's affecting our drinking water. I'm just gonna do it in a nutshell and then I will email other things around you that you can look through. But um, so The collective did, the Cornell Collective, they did uh kind of a data research of areas. And um, we are at that threshold where it's dangerous for people who have hypertension. So basically, if it's like twenty mil, I think milliliters per something, that's too high For people who are drinking our water, um, for people with hypertension. That's the concern. Um, so then the other thing was they talked about the solution. So the solution is uh to use basically less salt. So how do we do that? How do we navigate around that? What we navigate on is um brine. If you, if you prep the, the streets with brine first, you will overall use less salt. And so the, that, the problem with that is, how do we get a truck that can, where we can store the brine, right? And where we can distribute the brine, 'cause that's a whole other piece of equipment if I'm, if I'm, if I'm right.
Buying brine and having a truck that's straight for brine and everything, it will destroy that vehicle.
Right.
That's why the safety staff don't have it because it's just costing so much vehicle inflation.
So yeah, so it would have to be where it's like a bigger truck, bigger container, and we share that kind of cost with I don't know, another town or another, I don't know. That was the other discussion.
Anyone do it, like locally, Shannon, did they say? Like any other neighboring municipalities that use brine?
Well, the They didn't specifically say, but what they said was whoever, the person, the, the one town that uses the least amount of salt is Lake George. And my uncle was the mayor. He's the longest running mayor in history up to date of forty-five years of being mayor of Lake George. And um, and so they, because he was there for so long, it's like they got, you know, you didn't have to reinvent the wheel having new mayors in. So they're like kind of a head of the ball of everything when it comes to lowering the taxes and everything else, like, you know, putting up parking meters and stuff like that. But it's a huge tourist area. But they use brine, they're able, their budget is way bigger. So they're able to reduce it because of that. And also The lake, I don't know if you know this, but Lake George is the cleanest Lake. It's not one, it's the, the cleanest in the United States. And that's because it has no um other Veins of water feeding into that. It is seriously, it's just completely isolated.
Isolated.
So it's, you know, what they call like the tears of God. It's just the rain that comes down that goes into it. So that's it. That's the only source of uh water that Lake George gets.
Can, can they, do they use brine around the lake? Cause a lot of lakes that I go to up north, they don't use any. It's highway sand. They just use sand.
Yeah, they use sand.
They can't, they can't have, so that could be part of the reason they go on salt, you know? They use highway sand. I mean, that doesn't eat your vehicles ever, so.
But I, I, I'm going to, I was going, I'm gonna call them and I'm gonna ask them exactly what is they're doing, but I think they already use some of the brine.
Around the lake, so, hmm, interesting.
Cause all of those roads are new too. They have everything, you know, they don't have, I don't know, I have to look for it too, so I'll give you more information about that. And I will send something around.
Yeah, please. Thanks for going to that, by the way.
Mm-hmm, nice.
Something to uh think about, I think. We've, we've talked about, you know, I know there's obviously impediments to reducing the salt, but
I've looked at the magic salt, which is coated in rock salt coated in magnesium. So it helps expand the usage of salt. So it stays on the road longer.
It's expensive.
It's a little more expensive, but I know a lot of other towns are starting, start to love it. I think right now it's a hundred and ten dollars a ton and regular road salts, I think we're paying seventy-five a ton right now.
I think in a lot, just like in a lot of different avenues, people have gotten way too um Used to the fact that roads are clear within five minutes of a major snowstorm and have no thought about the repercussions of
Yeah.
What it takes to get that road.
Yeah, and then also the salt also destroys any kind of bio living stuff that we have in our, you know, and it's going into the river and
Yeah.
It's going into the trucks and everything else. So I don't know, I, there, we have to think of something where we're just using less salt and, you know, But I, I don't think you guys are out there the minute it hits. You guys do wait. I mean, in a, which is good.
Well, we, we technically, as soon as it starts snowing, we'll go and put salt out. So it's almost like a pre-treat. There's like brine ones and then you let the snow come down and hit. And then it grinds itself and then we wait until we get a couple inches on, back on the ground and then move out and then wait to clean up and then salt again.
Do you think that a lot of the salt falls over onto the greenery or does it stay mostly on the
No, because we, we don't have standards.
You do.
Calibrate them so everything's just hitting
Just hitting.
Very hard, that's right, so it just roll that.
Alright.
Because you don't, because if it's going over to the line, you're wasting salt at that point.
Yeah. You're, you're wasting salt and then you're ruining the groundwater, that's the thing, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta adjust the speed of the spinner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. So you guys are diligent about that.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, we don't wanna be wasting it.
No, right. Good, good, okay.
But I mean, it goes down into the grates on the road, which eventually, I mean, that's
No, I'm not saying, you know, like, it's not perfect science, but, but at the same time, you know, are we being diligent about the best of what we can do under the circumstances?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's all, which is I, which is great.
Thank you, Trustee Mossen on that. We'll look for those, we'll look for that more in the future. It's good stuff. Um. All set?
All set.
Thank you, sir.
We'll go back down, shut the smell.
Careful. Drive slow.
Yeah, drive slow.
I think, yeah.
Scott.
All right, um. On the water side, maintenance and sampling, uh, installed a new fire hydrant on Maple Avenue. Uh, replaced six curb valves, uh, two each on Hanson, Elm, and Maple. And expected to be two in the water tanks. Pretty normal. Yeah. And we're on sewer side, we all maintained sampling, uh, forced sludge to the drying bed and we stopped the aeration ORF And we insulated pipes for the winter.
So as everyone is aware, this O R F, our overflow reduction facility, has been a forward in the side of uh regulators.
Yeah.
Um, so Scott was making good progress over the summer with aeration. It, it has had to stop for uh, just because it's gotten so cold. Uh, we were able to get a small team together, was it last week?
Yeah.
Last week, over to the sewer plant. Trustee Mossen, you might have seen some of the uh, some of the activities out there. Uh, so we were able to get a small team over there and basically um Hopefully do some really good work into uh kind of breaking up this layer that's on top of of the sludge there. Um Because the E P A has been continually after us, even just even last week. Uh, so uh special thanks to uh Mike Masarone.
Spring Hill Farm Boys.
Spring Hill Farm.
V R I, you guys.
Chris Hawk.
Chris Hawk, yeah.
Scott, Patrick, um Trevor Runtler and
Connor Casey.
Connor Casey and um It's like Under Fire. Um, I'll get it in my newsletter. But we had some really strong support from a couple key members of the fire, uh
Yeah.
Fire.
Extremely helpful, actually.
Sarah, what's that kid's name we were talking about?
Jay Higgins.
Jay Higgins. Um, very, very helpful. Uh, they brought a pump truck?
Yeah, pumper truck.
Pump truck.
Yeah, yeah.
Fifteen thousand liters of water.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and uh, having did a great job. And um, so hopefully, and then We'll see if it's effective. Scott will, will kind of continue to monitor things down there to see if it's effective. I think it will buy us some time with the E P A, which is kind of what we're looking for.
But is there any, does it look promising what they did?
It, it looks incredibly promising.
Oh, yeah. So much better. Oh my god, it's such a difference.
Does it? Really? Really?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
It's such a difference.
We can talk about it offline too. Um
Yeah, yeah, no, but I, I'll let you hear that. Oh, that's great.
But yeah, yeah.
It, it looked, it didn't look, it looked grim last time we talked to him.
No, this was great. This was actually, uh, this was great. And Erin was there from Ticken Bog, too. Our engineer was there. So, and she was quite happy. And, and we've already notified the E P A. Uh, so, so things are looking good there. And then continuing on the sewer Sewer plant, uh, we, today we received our five-year speedy's permit from the D E C. Um, sorry?
Finally.
Finally, yes. Taking quite a long time, which is awesome, it's good. And then we also received DEC approval of our preliminary engineering report for the new plant, which opens up um financing that we've already qualified for, so we can stop borrowing money from the bank and get this industry financing from New York State. Uh so a lot of good things uh have have um happened in the last week or so. That was so, uh
It's great, yeah.
Um so things are, things are looking good there. Continuing to move along, a lot of good progress. Um, did I miss anything? I like, I like pressing this.
It's the one fun thing. I wanna do a
Is that it, Scott?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thanks for your help last week. Um
Yeah, thank you guys.
Much appreciated.
You guys.
And a couple, what happened this week?
With the water maker?
Yeah.
With Mr. Murphy? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you do it?
Yeah, actually they do it.
Yeah.
Oh.
But you know what's nice is when you have guys like Scott and Mike, Mike uh Puligi, those guys, you call them, speed dial, they had the valves killed in twenty minutes.
Oh.
You know, we were able to fix it by the end of the day, so it's perfect.
Oh, good.
When they have KFC get parts.
You know?
We didn't have all the parts.
A shout out to you guys.
And we were able to check off a couple of
Curb boxes?
lead, curb boxes and lead pipe checks.
So while we were there, we got a couple things done with that, yeah, which is nice.
Right. Yeah. Call it a silver lining.
Yes, yeah, that was.
Exactly, correct, excellent. Um I just wanna backpedal a little bit, Chief. Go back to our DOT um truck discussion too, Trusty Mossen, that we've been having.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh as everybody knows, um you know, we were operating under this understanding that we were almost at the finish line to getting trucks off of Franklin. Um
That happens.
DOT was just continuing to ignore my emails, not getting back to me, not getting back to me. Finally I had to reach out to um Assemblywoman Barrett, who reached out to DOT, who then reached out to Chief Dworkin and told us we are not, they're not approving our request yet until we jump through a couple more hoops, one of which would be a traffic study.
Yes.
Um which we're looking at. Um but any sort of truck route change like that is in, is not, um can't be done by a DOT rep from Poughkeepsie. It has to be signed off by the DOT Commissioner or the Deputy Commissioner in Albany. So I don't know why we were told uh this incorrect information back in March. Incredibly frustrating. Waste of time, waste of money. Um
Mm-hmm.
Trusty Mossen and I uh met with uh Dee Dee Barrett uh shortly afterwards and gave us a couple ideas, I guess, to look at it. That were
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, the more I think about it, and I was reading websites and stuff like that, it's it's, you know, they tried to do this twenty years ago as well, you know?
I remember that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And um that wasn't successful. And then I'm thinking the only way we could even have a a chance of this going through would be if we, if there was bodily harm. I think that's, it has to be this kind of extreme scenario in order
Yeah, it's made of a box.
Literally, literally.
But I I that, you know, it does, it just doesn't look feasible to me. And that, so so then, you know, we're thinking about slowing things down.
Right.
And then I'm thinking, okay, so, you know, I spoke to um George Whalen and he was, he kind of did some in and outs of the twenty years ago, and he says like the one part that's really bad is the narrowing past doors, right, where it gets really narrow.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of people park right in that area where it gets narrowed because House of Steppes is there. So we got enough traffic happening on both sides. And then we got people hit in mirrors. So, you know, we do have an issue of parking. And then I'm thinking, well, how can we deter people from not parking on Franklin and parking on the sides of the roads? The only thing I can think of is that we start putting up. And I think it's a good idea only because there are a lot of disabled people that need to get to the pharmacy. It would be good, not that we have handicaps all the time, but we have where you have to pay for parking on Franklin in front of those businesses. And I know you know, I'm sure, I I don't know what the ins and outs are for to do that, or how much it's gonna cost us to get that up, I don't know. But it would also bring money in for us to do other things that we have a hard time. I just feel like we're shoestring it all the time with this budget we have. It's just not enough.
So we've, we talked about a couple different things and we were off, we were
Right.
given some information about all different, a bunch of different kinds of methods. We talked to the chief about some different methods as well. You know, just just on my list, let's say there's parking meters, there's parking diagonally instead of parking like this.
Mm-hmm.
Chief ha- had a good idea of parking diagonally. And then in the DOT information, they had diagonal parking as well. You can get a lot more cars in that way.
Diagonal on Franklin?
Yeah, on one s- on one side, right? So it was, piping would move to one side and be diagonal.
On one side of the street.
Oh, my god.
Then you'd have to hike that line over a little bit and then keep
Right.
The width of the, with the, the lit traffic lanes.
Yeah.
And then you're not, you're, you know, you're not having, people having their mirrors knocked down, you know?
A lot of the car, the median were.
Mirrors won't get knocked down, so.
Yeah.
There's things like raised um raised crosswalks, which a lot of municipalities have adopted. Um there's other things.
Yeah, that might also deter the trucks.
It's like a speed bump.
Yeah, the bump, I don't think
I like the idea of narrowing things. I would throw
Like the bump outs are a good idea.
The bump outs or the raised crosswalks, I think.
I don't like the idea of bump outs.
Why?
Like because we're gonna have one section of the sidewalk in Franklin that has bump outs and the rest of it that we just redone last year, so it's not gonna
I think, I think realistically, if we were gonna do it, we should have done it.
Last two years ago?
Yeah, it's gonna be really hard to do now, especially with our project that's almost two bids.
Well, it's not a sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, yeah.
So unfortunately, I think that is probably just impossible to do right now, just because
Mm-hmm. Or we just have more events in the village and you just keep a a big sign out there that's gonna show around.
Yeah. I like that sign, I like that sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it works.
She had to like, she had to like
It's a, yeah, but isn't there limits we can do? I mean, we can't, we can't be using that big all the time, right? Like, people are gonna be like, oh, it's a good thing it's all the time.
No, I know, I know, it does work.
So
Slow some down coming in the village, too.
I mean, from my per- my perspective, there's, there's no immediate answer here, unfortunately. The DOT, to your point, Shannon, I I find completely useless.
Right.
Right.
Oh, they're
I I I can't even put into words what a waste this was. Uh and you're right, like, they would only respond to when someone gets killed, which is a bizarre way to operate.
Someone Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Um
It, yeah, it has to be like something catastrophic for them to go, oh, okay, we'll do that, you know? And I think
Mm.
I think, I don't know. Alright, let's just for argument's sake, we widen the road where it's narrow. How much is that gonna cost? How much is, how much is
It's gonna get a little wider just with the work that we're proposing now, right? I mean, it's gonna fix a little bit of that regular house of stuff. It's not much, but a little bit, maybe.
No.
But you can't just wind your road because you're taking some of your property, too.
No, you can't, right, you can't.
You also gotta realize when when we start working on Franklin Avenue, we're taking over what the state should be doing. That's the state's road. The curving's technically on them, the catch faces are technically on them. If we start operating them and we have, you know, then we're taking up, yeah.
Right. Right, then then we, we own it. Yeah, I know, yeah.
If we open up a can of worms, we gotta fix them.
Right, right, right.
Can I make the suggestion?
Please.
Yeah.
It's just a a point. Um I know with traffic impact study was something that was discussed. I know they are expensive, um
Any any luck with vendors?
No, I'm sorry, not yet.
Okay.
But I will continue to work on it.
Okay.
Um I think the benefit is it could open us up to some grants, because once we can prove that that there's an actual, you know, safety issue there that needs to be addressed. And the other benefits are, you know, I look at this thing like it's not just uh a safety issue with people crossing the street, but it's also balancing out with appeasing the the businesses. And I, and I'm sure you all feel the same way, right? They don't wanna lose any of those parking spaces. So
Any costners.
Right.
if we look at, if if there was a way to afford to have an impact study done, and we tell them, look at this is what we're looking at, one side of the road parking, the angle parking, and I know the bump outs aren't always popular, but the benefit of the bump outs are, it allows you to park right up, it's for cars to park, it expands your parking space. So you can park right up to where those bump outs are. New York State law says you're not supposed to park with a fifty feet of an intersection. So that's all space that you gain, and it's safer now because with pedestrians cross the road, you know, if I'm standing here, I'm not standing behind a car that's parked to my left where I can't see out past it.
Right.
I'm standing at the at the closest edge of the car.
Right.
So as a pedestrian, when I go to cross, I'm just looking down the road and I have a better field of vision to see cars that are coming. So safer for pedestrians to cons traffic because it narrows the roadway where pedestrians are crossing and it expands parking space. So I I know these changes are, you know, can create problems, but just saying maybe just keep an open mind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
An impact study may, could be, could open our eyes to some real benefits, some options that that weren't present before.
I see your point on that, and I'm I'm willing to think about that, but
Yeah.
to Shannon's point, if there's no, and we had talked about it, if there hasn't been any accidents, what's this study gonna show?
It it could show the potential for accidents. And I think that's kind of where DOT was was heading when they were saying that we have to do that, because we can't prove it through statistics, but we can say that, look at, you know, with an impact study, you can say, hey, this is the volume of commercial vehicles you have coming down this road. You know, this is the, they could statistically and and through their measurements and 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 number calculations be able to show DOT, hey, this may not be a problem in the past, but it's certainly gonna be a problem in the future. You know, and you don't wanna wait until there is a fatality to address it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Maybe that that could help us leverage them into taking over this project and fixing it the way the board wants it first.
Chief, have you had any, like, how often do you get calls on like mirrors getting struck from, like, is it quite often? Is it?
I wouldn't say it's often, but it's 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 often enough where it's a problem.
I I I know three incidents personally.
I mean, I've had
Like, not me personally, but like, you know, uh twice to one individual, twice, one to one individual. And um and George Whalen's wife.
She was it.
No, they're not always reported to us, you know, a lot of times people see the damage, you go, uh, whatever, you know, yeah.
Well, keep us in the loop if, and I know Dee Dee Barrett's office had said that DOT should have some names for these vendors, so
Or just
let us know what you find out, we'll we'll, um you know, if we if we get a proposal from one or two vendors and we'll see what it what it looks like.
I can mention to Alyssa to start looking for um any options for grants to help with impact studies and
How does everyone else feel about moving in some direction in regards to this?
It sounds like, it sounds like a, an impact study makes sense. Again, you know, once you have the data, it does give you a little bit more to point to and
Yeah.
And when you get somebody at DOT, even sort of, you know, you've got some data to back up their concerns. I guess it would depend on how much it
That's true, me too.
Yeah, so if you do it and then we're still gonna be so proud of you.
Those are gonna be results, or we just, are we gonna
Right, that's 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 my only worry. It might be, let's say it's twenty grand.
Right.
It's a lot of money.
It is.
And if it's like, if it's like this mealy mouth, middle of the ground, like, you know, maybe there's a problem, maybe there's not, and then it's like, right, what do we do? I mean, we won't know until we do it, I get that, but
Yeah.
Well, I think the grants, I mean, that's, yeah, see if we can get
The grant, yeah, the grant will help, sure, minimize the cost, you know?
I guess we should see the limitations of getting the grants first before we do the
And the person mentioned to you that a town in Orange County did a traffic study and has been waiting, what, years now, still for the for DOT?
For DOT.
So there's that.
Yep. Well, maybe our our friends at the Millbrook listens who seems that this is one of their big pet issues is the traffic through the village and maybe we can get some of their energy behind it.
Call your uh, call your congressman and your New York State representatives, because otherwise I don't, I don't know who else makes the decisions around here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Apparently not DOT.
Yeah. Uh Chief, thank you. Um alright, sorry, clerk, let's go back to building apartment.
Okay, so for building in the month of November, we issued eight building permits, one certificate of occupancy, three certificate of compliances, and one fire inspection that is not STR related. Total fees collected, three thousand six hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. For planning and zoning, um there was public hearing opening for a Rothman um accessory apartment and preliminary discussion for lot line realignment for forty-six Valley Farm. Follow-up meeting was on the eighth, but I'm not sure what the results of that was. Uh ZBA, there was a public hearing for sixty Maple, rear yard setback, thirty Valley Farm rear yard setback, and two-story addition. Um public hearing referral for thirty Valley Farm for planning work for the site plan approval. And then there's one application in review for short-term rentals. That's all I have for building planning, there's any questions?
No.
Sure, it's
Cool.
Okay, for treasure, I've submitted the uh ending bank balances for November. Um so if anything jumps out at anyone, feel free to give me a shout. And then I have for New York Class, those are their ending bank balances. Um for for clerk treasure, starting New York, um meeting prep, which we have for the seventh of January, hopefully that's okay for everybody. Um and then uh submitted the chips reimbursement for Russell Knowles Haven for twenty-two thousand nine hundred forty dollars. Um should we be approved, we should receive that in March, which is good, cause that's before fiscal year ends. And wanted to thank trustee Sotchi for uh the past year. Appreciate all you did for us. And um happy holidays.
Thank you.
You too.
Nice.
Um we already mentioned the Toys for Tots, and uh we also have Angels of Light toy drive that are going on in the Village Hall um ending this week into next week, I think Angels of Light. And then uh New Year's Eve, Millbrook is on thirty-first of December, four to seven PM, Village Wide Events. There's buttons that can be purchased at Ritten Briggs and it's by donation. That's all the information I have. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um any business, I mean so we'll just go to updates, you know, update, yeah. Uh I think I did all of my updates. Um definitely may emerge anything for you?
I think you kinda handled mine too.
Okay.
With the ORF and everything like that.
Okay, okay. Uh trustee Sotchi?
Final.
Words of wisdom for us.
Wonderful working for them this year.
Yeah, that's
Likewise.
And I wish you
Pleasure working with you too.
Thank you. Don't be sorry, it's great. Yeah, you can always, you can always come to our meeting, I, I just, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we, it's boring.
Yeah.
Really, really, really boring.
Very boring, yeah. Trusty Mossen, anything else?
Yeah, I think I got, I think I got enough to submit um for um prices on the lamps in in Franklin.
Cool. Correct.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, I know we've updated that whole thing. I have two bids from two different businesses. The third bid was a no answer. Is that okay?
Back back house.
Okay, the third bid is make sure, not to call them out, but
But you called them out, so, love that. Um
But yeah, okay, so I have that, I will submit that and with you and then you can tell me how to do that.
Anything you wanna bring to us now, just generally, numbers wise?
Number wise, we're looking at, well, now, listen, I got prices for the building and the gym. I did, I got those prices too. Gym's a little more expensive only because you need a lift to get up there, and he was trying to work all that out.
A lift, yeah.
Um we're looking at five to ten grand for both projects.
Okay. Isn't that bad? I don't know. I thought it was gonna be more for somebody else. And it's just a bulb replacement every time?
No. No, it's not, like, say there's some balances that have to be changed here for the, for some of the LEDs for the old stuff. Um that will, he will, he has that in the price.
Okay.
But I think he's so willing to work with us, you know, and he's like, oh, I didn't have to change that, I could just put in LEDs there that didn't need it, you know what I mean, they say.
And make sure you bring that to um
How many bulbs is it? You know, how many lamps are left on?
Oh, I don't know. I have to look at the, we we counted it, it's on the paperwork, so we have it all on the paperwork and the numbers. Um I know the lamps opt, all the lamps that we're doing here is thirty, thirty there.
Okay.
Make sure Climate Smart Group knows about that, so they can, you know
No, that's part of it, so we've already mentioned it, they know I'm I'm on that.
Gotcha.
Mm-hmm.
And then Julie, you're gonna go to that, so you can tell them
I'm, yeah, so there's a meeting there uh on Friday here, and I'll be, yeah, I'll be going for that.
Yeah. Okay.
So you could just update them on what I just said. And I have prices.
You can, yes.
And that I'm
For both the Village Hall and the and the
Yes, mm-hmm. That's it, that we're at that point now. I have prices.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
It'll be nice to have them all uniform too, uh because some of them are a little bit It'll be nice to have them all uniform too, uh, because some of them are a little bit, like, some of the bulbs aren't exactly matching and, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So it'll be nice.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you for all the legwork on that.
Uh-huh. That's all right.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm done. That's it, that's all I got.
Yeah, they're done.
Trustee Buckland?
Uh, honestly, not a lot.
Okay.
Uh, the, cause, cause it's, we are in the dormant tree season, so the tree uh, commission, you know, we're kind of in a holding head.
Hold. Yeah.
Um, I did go to that luncheon for the for the Millbrook Listens, that was very, that was lovely, a lot of energy.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of people really wanna get involved in village events, village, yeah, high touch of the women who are putting the dance on.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's, you know, the village is is lively, they're involved in things, it really is.
It's nice.
And then I am, I am going to the Climate Start um committee meeting on on, yeah, on Friday, yeah.
Right.
So, yeah, I think pickleball's been pretty, pretty popular, I think very uh appreciative for people, so it's a good way to
Oh, good.
It's a great draw to, 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 all these events.
Yeah.
Get things kind of going there again.
Yeah, yeah, so.
People spending money in the businesses, you know, keeping things lively, it's great.
Yeah, absolutely, and we need to keep it going, you know, have like a thing a month, that would be, that would be great to pull people in.
Exactly. Crazy, it's crazy how full the village is.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. No, there really are, I think, and then and then it creates a momentum of its own, right?
People see people getting involved and then they wanna get involved and then, yeah, it's 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 pretty exciting.
All set?
All set.
All set.
Okay, uh, we are gonna have a short executive session here, so I think we're all set, otherwise, I'll make a motion that we adjourn and enter executive session. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Alright.
Uh, thank you.